Good evening, Mount Vernon, and welcome to the Mount Vernon City Council Public Meeting. My name is Caitlin Gleason, and I am President of the Mount Vernon City Council. Today is February 28th, 2024, and it is 7:01 PM. Just to start off the meeting, we're going to start off with a little housekeeping. So if you can please silence your cell phones, put it on vibrate so it's not interrupting the meeting. We have an exit in the rear of the room to your right, my left, and exit up front to your right, my left. We also have stairs to the right outside the door, the rear door here for emergency exit. Lady's bathroom is right outside the front doors here. Men's bathroom is down the hallway by the center hall, center stairs, center rotunda stairs. I'd also like to include that there is an AED machine outside the Planning Department office, just in case there is any, anybody in need of an artificial defibrillator. With that being said, we will stand for a pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Potte. Right now, we're going to enter into our public speaking session. And the first public speaker we have is Olive Morgan. Is Olive Morgan in council chambers or online?
I'm speaking on behalf of Olive Morgan. This is Lenika French, Olive Morgan's daughter.
Okay, go ahead. Please state your name and your address.
Sure. Lenika French, 29 Beekman Avenue.
Okay, you have three minutes to speak, and then you have an extra minute to finalize.
Okay, I am here to bring attention to the ongoing issue with the business Food Ireland, located at 230 East Third Street. Our backyard is adjacent to the business. We are separated by a low-wired fence. Food Ireland has been consistently contributing to an environment of noise pollution and litter in the early morning, which is deeply disruptive. The issue of excessive noise begins as early as 1:00 AM when the 16-wheeler trailer leaves the business. The noise emanates from the loading and unloading operations conducted by the business. Specifically, the dumpsters are dropped by trucks, which cause loud bangs. Tractor trailers sit idle with their loud engines running, which also contribute to the noise. The loud bangs startle us out of our sleep. My mom, who is 76, can no longer sleep in her primary bedroom, and we set alarms so that we are not jolted awake. Regarding proper waste management, Food Ireland now keeps their dumpsters along the fence that separates us. Trash, packing material, and debris are often found scattered along the fence. In addition, the business has started to stack wooden stands that were once placed on Third Street and are now placed on Langdon Avenue. These crates are visually unappealing and a fire hazard. We are kindly requesting that the city officials conduct an investigation into the business's practices to ensure that they are in compliance with relevant ordinances and regulations. We also ask for law enforcement officers to do early morning patrols to monitor and enforce noise level restrictions. I have emailed pictures and videos showing the trucks leaving at 2:07 and another truck leaving at 2:44. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much. Each council member will respond. That's neglected to say that at the beginning, at the end of our public speaking session. We have former Councilwoman Lisa Copeland. Is Lisa Copeland online or in council chambers? Not in council chambers? No, not online? Okay, moving right along. Lenika, that was you, correct? So we have you and your mother as speakers tonight.
Oh, yes, it's just, she's me.
No problem, no problem. Moving right on to former DPW Commissioner Ray Copeland Senior, who I see in the room. If you don't mind, come up and state your name and your address.
I wish I was Ray Copeland Junior. But you said Junior or Senior?
I said Senior.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Trying to take me back, which would be good. Good evening. Raymond Copeland, 236 Bedford Avenue. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. It's been a while since I had this pleasure. But anytime that I'm here, I feel like I'm welcome, and I just want to say thank you, especially for helping me out with the situation with the car wash adjacent to me. It has quieted down tremendously. Thank you so very much. Only problem I have with the car wash now is this, this lady just mentioned, the noise, where the dumpsters are being, and the trash are being picked up at 2:00 in the morning, and they're banging the dumpster up against the truck trying to get all of the garbage out of it. So it goes boom, boom, boom. It's 2:00 in this morning, so I'm more or less in the same situation that this lady just spoke. I think there's a time limit when they're supposed to pick make that kind of noise, and I'd like to have that looked into, number one. Meanwhile, I'm here this evening because after so many years of coming here to the City Council meetings, and I'm getting up in age now, and I don't have that extra energy that I had when 50-some years ago, when I used to come up here and stand and listen to those people that was much older than I was, like the Tuckles. Maybe you don't remember Mr. Tucker. He was a very active person here in the neighborhood. And you wonder who's going to take your place after you're gone? Who's going to be the one to take the torch and move it, keep it moving and keep the city safe? As the city that it should, because we have a beautiful city. I wonder who's going to take the next step to carry on. Having said that, I know that, and you're traveling throughout Mount Vernon, you notice that the city is being blanketed with signs on the telephone poles, anywhere they can stick a sign. The city is being blanket, covered with signs on the poles, anywhere they can stick them. And it just takes away from the appearance of the city. I know that it's kind of a complicated situation to deal with, because you don't know who's putting the signs up. And if you call the number on the signs to try to trap a person or whoever's doing it, you get no response, especially the one that says, "We buy your house," or "We buy your junk cars." You call that number, you never get nobody. So it's like a windshield wiper between DPW, the city, Police Department, as far as who is the person that's, that's supposed to be directly responsible for that? It's being pushed from the Police Department to DPW. They said they only have a certain amount of responsibility towards that. So who is the person that would deal with that situation and wash it so that we could get rid of all these signs on the poles and anywhere they can stick them? I would appreciate if y'all were looking to that for me. There was something else I was going to say. Oh, yeah, this would be the last thing, I promise. You know, when I was out in Queens to a City Council meeting, and the things that I heard the people there complained about compared to here in Mount Vernon, I mean, like out there, there's certain colors you can paint your house and certain colors that you cannot paint. There's certain colors of roof that you can put on your roof. And I said, "That would be nice in Mount Vernon if they would..."
Wrap it up, Mr. Copeland, please. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Let me, can I get one more second, please? Thank you. Now, sit down, I promise. And I said that to say this. Here in Mount Vernon, there's no parking space here in Mount Vernon for the cars. And when the people come home, so what they are doing is taking their front yard and pouring cement into the yards, creating parking spaces in front of the house. It's noticeable to be flowers and beautification in front of your house, but they pour it right up to the foundation so they have someplace to park. And I think that take away from the beautification. I love this city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Former Commissioner Copeland. We appreciate you being still engaged in the city. We have Mr. Jeff Monroe next. Mr. Monroe, if you don't mind, come, state your name.
Thank you, Council President. Greetings officially. My name is Jeff Monroe. I'm resident of Mount Vernon. Greetings to the community, to our elected councilpeople and staff. I'd like to spend my time tonight actually diverting from my initial intention to abut the attempts of research and consideration that I heard as a response from the electeds to my appeal for a ceasefire demand. I'd like to speak briefly tonight in commemoration of the, of a fellow veteran for peace, the self-immolated victim of a war on the Palestinian people. Ehrin Bushnell, self-immolated, on the afternoon of February 25th. And I speak as a, as a former veteran myself, who, of the Persian Gulf War, who has spent many hours, though I've never seen actual field combat. My time in the years following Persian Gulf War was spent with many veterans, mostly of the Vietnam era, who sat in therapy sessions talking about what, what war does to a person. And this is, this is not from just a victim perspective of a losing side, so-called losing side of a war. This is from the perspective of the so-called superior force side. There are no winners in war. There are no winners in war. And having said that, consider what the victims, the, the, the children, the civilian children of Gaza are going through at this moment and have been for 75 years in Palestine. I say that with consideration to what we, we sit idly by if we do not speak up and act more, more immediately on this genocidal action that the State of Israel is committing. In that sense, I want to respond tonight with what I believe is a sincere intention on our electeds to do some research. So I'm going to help do some of that publicly, for mostly the intent of the community, quite frankly. But I've sent an attachment with a personal correspondence to the electeds. I hope that you'll get some clarification out of that. Thank you. But I also included in the message, in the body of the message, a message, a communique which I'll read a portion of tonight for the rest of my time on the, on the microphone. So this message reads, "Did the Israeli military kill its own citizens on 7 October 2023? Regular readers of the electronic Intifada know that it did. Israel claims that Hamas or other Palestinian fighters killed 1,200 Israelis on 7 October, but as our reporting since that day shows, a significant, though yet, though as yet undetermined number were killed by Israeli forces using tank shells and helicopter gunships. These killings were due to a combination of panicked indiscriminate fire and application of the Hannibal Doctrine, an Israeli military procedure that allows its forces to prevent the capture, to prevent the capture of Israelis by any means, even if that means killing them." It references a video that I won't go into and its narration. But another portion of the, the message says, "Indeed, on January 7th, the electronic Intifada was a target of a scurrilous smear by that prominent American newspaper, an attack that has done nothing to deter us from pursuing the truth." I say that because I understand that the decision to do this ceasefire demand is not one that I'm sure you would take lightly. I don't expect that you think I'm asking for a simple thing, but I'm asking you to take the difficulty to heart and do it anyway, because the smears, the targeting of your families, the targeting of your community, community members or your personal selves are a natural part of standing up for justice. No one in this country has done anything right without suffering. Understand? Finally, my final communique on this is that the information says almost all the information about... I'll wrap up by saying, "Almost all the information about so-called friendly fire incidents on 7 October comes from Israeli sources and media, and yet this is rarely reported in mainstream Western outlets, which continue to stick closely to Israelis, to Israel's official propaganda narratives." I say that, keeping in mind that I'm sure many of you will do your research with the corporate press in mind. I'm hoping that you'll do more than just corporate press of CNN and the alphabet soup, alphabet soup media, as we call them, look into electronic Intifada and others that I'll be coming to this microphone to refer, to reference. I have copies for each council member and the clerk. Thank you very much. I have other, I have other copies for the community. If anyone feels welcome to look at a copy of the printed. Thank you.
Mr. Monroe, you could leave them on the table there. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Former Councilwoman Lisa Copeland, is she online? Okay, with that being said, I'll go into, have our councilpeople please respond, starting with Councilman Potte. Are you, you're not on the list? They did? Okay, can you go to the clerk? No problem. Ms. McDonough, come up. You're just not on the list. They must have made a mistake in the office. Please come up.
Thanks. You guys hear me okay? It's my third annual visit to the City Council. I think that's about, about right. I've got a few questions, I think four, and I'll say the question when I'm watching it. It's a little bit tight, I thought. Oh, Chris McDonald, 17, Vernon Place.
Hold on, Mr., hold on. We're going to stop. First, I want to apologize to you. It has been confirmed that our office made an error.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay, so go ahead and restart the timer. Thank you.
Okay, so the, the first issue came up at the work session on Monday regarding EMS. And I want to go back to August of 2022, when the City Council approved the purchase of four ambulances through the URA using ARPA funds, about $310,000 per ambulance. It seems to me at that moment, you set the, the agenda for bringing EMS services in-house, right? That's when you made that purchase. At that time, Councilmember Brown asked Commissioner Norman, "Did you guys do a cost-benefit analysis?" To which she said, "No." It was long, it took a little bit longer, but the answer was, "No, there wasn't a cost-benefit analysis." Monday night, that came up again. Same conversation happened 18 months later about a cost-benefit analysis. It hasn't been done yet. So this strikes me as, as problematic. And we're now, we're now committed. We purchased these, these ambulances. And I want to be clear that I understand it's not just about money. It's about social welfare, first and foremost, and there are cost-benefit analyses, processes that can account for it. I gave one last year in the list of articles. One was called "The Marginal Value of Public Funds." That takes into account human benefits when you're, when you're spending municipal funds and you're doing an initiative. So there are ways to account for that. So my first question about this is that, is this. If we do a cost-benefit analysis now, and it shows that this doesn't merit going forward, what do we do? We already own the ambulances. Do we sell them at depreciated value? Because they started depreciating as soon as you purchased them. Can you do that? Can you, is that something that's allowable, given the rules of the URA and ARPA funds? And if the answer is no, we can't do that, then I guess what, what we're doing is just going ahead anyway, regardless of what the cost-benefit analysis shows us. The second question is going forward, will you guys commit here and now to not doing that again? To see if you, if you're confronted with a, a public initiative that involves significant purchases of equipment and adding staff to payroll, and that calls for a careful economic analysis, would you commit to doing that before you approve it? Because again, as soon as you said yes to the ambulances, it's done. We are having EMS. We're delaying it, but it's, it's going to happen. So that was my, that was my first two questions. Next, I have a question about the conditions under which City Council members will abstain from a vote. And this is, there have been a few items where legislation has been approved to send council members to conferences. So the most recent one, Mr. Potte, was when you went, it was like $1,200 to go to the conference. Okay, so my question is this, or I should say, my comment about this is this. So if a yes vote on spending legislation is going to be credible, it has to be credible for us to believe that you could vote no. And I'm saying you couldn't. Go back and do a thought experiment. Take that legislation, they get around to you, and you say no. They say, "Wait a minute, you're voting no, that we can't spend the money to send you to Albany." The point is, you shouldn't vote yes if you can't vote no. And in a certain circumstance like that, you can't vote no, because it would never come before the council if you said no. They're not going to force you to go to Albany on a conference. They're not going to be able to do that. So my question for you is, does the City Council use guidelines to help determine when a member should abstain from a vote? And if, and if you do, could you please share those guidelines with the public? The final question has to do with a few salary increases, and the question, pretty sizable ones. I think the Chief of Staff and maybe the Rec Commissioner have got like 15% bumps. For me, the question is, were these amounts contemplated in the 2021 vote anyway? I nailed that.
Okay, with that being said, has former Councilwoman Lisa Copeland gone online? Okay.
No, Council President.
Okay, with that being said, we're going to have our council respond to the public. I'm starting with Councilman Potte.
Thank you, Council President Gleason. Good evening, everyone. Happy, happy Wednesday. Thank you for coming. You will always hear me say this. You can be anywhere. So I'm grateful that you're here tonight, sharing your thoughts and your opinions with us. Ms., Ms. French, thank you. You know, our home is our sanctuaries, right? So the last thing you want is to be in your house and having to deal with loud noises early, early in the morning. I am going to lean a little bit on Councilwoman Gleason, because I'm just trying to figure out what the department, whether it's police, Consumer Protection, or DPW, would be the one that we would go to to then figure out what's happening with Food, Food Island and those issues there. But council will definitely follow up and try to make sure that those loud noises aren't happening with you or to you early in the morning. Mr. Copeland, thank you. Mr. Copeland, thank you for coming. Happy we could help you with the car wash. Same issue that Ms. French had. I'll work with Councilman Gleason, Council President Gleason, to figure out the noise issue, whether that's police, DPW, or Consumer Protection. Which department here would be dealing with that? Same for the signs on the telephone poles, that the honest answer is, I don't know right now which division would be dealing with that, but we will, we will definitely find out. Lastly, you mentioned parking spaces. It's definitely an issue that we've heard, I've heard for the past two years, especially on the South Side, there being a lack of parking. We are still in the comp plan process. And although the first phase is done, the second phase will actually focus on the rest of the city, especially on the South Side. Part of the reason why the comp plan was so necessary was because of parking, right? You have, I think that Mount Vernon is the third-most dense city in New York State. But also there's parcels, really in the downtown area, that we could use to add some density to also relieve the parking issue that's on the South Side. So I would humbly ask, please come out to those meetings that we're still having them. They'll be happening all this, this year, and we'll be focusing specifically on Fleetwood and the South Side. But parking is an issue that needs to be bought up and dealt. Mr. Monroe, Jeff, thank you for coming. Thank you for taking your time out and coming through. War is tough. I mean, as you mentioned before, there are no winners at all. I'm not sure if I agree with the fact that Israelis killed their own. I don't think they beheaded their own children. But I will do the research, and thank you for bringing the information, because it's always good to find out what's happening. And you are right that the typical media doesn't cover what actually happens. So thank you for bringing the information. I will do the research and then find out what's happening there. I think, oh, Mr. McDonough, thanks for coming. As usual, you're, you're, you're right about many things that you're saying. So let me start with the second part. Will council be more diligent with significant capital purchases? You know, I'm one of five council members, but yes, we should and we will going, going forward. What's the criteria for an abstention vote? I would assume, and I'll let Corporation Counsel answer if he wants to, that it's a conflict of interest, right? If you have a sure conflict of interest, you should not be voting on that item. And, but I could be wrong, which is why I'm not Corporation Counsel. I didn't see the conference as a conflict of interest. There was a lot of resources that I learned and got up in Albany and, and bringing them back to Mount Vernon. So I'm happy that I went. I'm happy that my council members voted for me to go. I didn't see that as a conflict of interest, but again, Corporation Counsel has that answer. I hope I answered your question, Council President. Thank you.
Councilman Thompson?
Hi, good evening. I was, I was looking up addresses as our persons was, our constituents were speaking, and 230 East Third Street does give me a concern. I'm looking even at the pictures on Google. You can see the pallets that are right in front of, right behind that low fence. So we definitely have to get someone out there to check out what's going on with that business. And those who don't know where that is, that's a few steps down from where the AAC is. So, yeah, it does look horrible online, so I'm sure in person it looks even worse. So we'll get somebody out there tomorrow to look and investigate that problem with the trash and the pallets and things of that nature. So we will reach out to you. I see your email and contact there, so I'll contact you once we get some resolve with that. So that was Mom and Daughter there, Mr. Copeland. The, I, I know we resolved the, the car wash noise problem. You see me out there several times. You know, I do drive by and try to resolve the issues. And now, now it's a garbage issue over there, right? So we're going to see, because garbage pickup is prohibited within the city of Mount Vernon from 2:00 AM to 7:00 AM. But what happens with businesses, businesses... But what happens with businesses, businesses usually have their separate garbage people who come and part their garbage away. But we have to make sure that we hold them accountable to follow the rules as our garbage people follow, right? So I'm gonna have to send somebody else out again. So I'll stop by tomorrow and talk with them. And then I always I always give our business owners the benefit of the doubt because some people just don't know, you know? So it is it is common courtesy for us to stop by and give them a warning. So I always tell business owners, when you see me, I'm sort of the warning. And if someone else has to come back, come back out after me, that's usually gonna end up in some sort of issuance of a fine or something. So try to give business owners and residents alike that grace. So we're looking to that tomorrow as well. Cement being poured for parking. That should not be happening, so we'll have to. If you know a specific address where that has happened, you know, we can have the building department to come come out. I'll speak to you offline about that, but we can have the building department to come out and you don't, I tell homeowners, you don't wanna cement up close to your house. You wanna have dirt because you need that soak away. So if anyone who owns a home, make sure you're not putting cement up to your foundation, because if you don't have a soak away, you're gonna cause a flood within your home. So we'll have to investigate that as well. But that's through our building department and we'll try to get some resolve on that as well. With the ambulances, I know I am just. I'm excited to see this come into fruition, because I know that the response time will be much better than it has been for our residents. So I know the concern is about the spending and how everything is gonna work out, but it's it's a work in process, so I I understand the concern. There are so many things that need to be ironed out, but I do believe it's on, it's gonna work properly. I I just think that it's a lot of things that have to be worked out. But I do believe it's gonna become an asset for our community and do some great things for our community. You know, I believe that was it and oh, the last thing was abstaining, right? You know, that that that's a touchy subject when you abstain from any vote. But you should make sure that you're you're doing everything in the best interest of, not the person, but the best interest of the city. And if it's the best interest of the city, you should always vote yes. If you abstain, you know, anytime there's an abstention, there's also an explanation of why they're abstaining. It's not always I'm gonna abstain, I should abstain because I can't say no. That's not, you know, how all abstentions, in some cases maybe, but in that case, when it comes to training, not so much. So I'm I'm happy to look more into this and have further conversations about that. But thank you all for your questions and your concerns. Thank you. That's all.
Councilman Boxel?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. I don't wanna be repetitive. A lot of this has been covered, but let's go through some of them. The the carding noises, Miss French, Mr. Commissioner Copeland, that is unexcusable. I can't imagine being waking up 2:00 in the morning by banging it. So we we definitely have to look into that. All we, you know, we welcome our business owners and carding companies, their contracts and such, but they have to follow the rules of the city nevertheless, so we definitely have to look into that. The actual cement parking, I have heard somebody had asked me about that as well, so I'm in the the process of looking into that already too. So yeah, that should never happen because obviously that's that's not ideal for the aesthetics of our city. People just making makeshift driveways and such, so that's definitely be code enforcement and building department issue. So thank you for bringing that up as well. What else was there? Mr. Monroe. Obviously, you know, you spoke about this before, very passionate about what's going on. And I I I don't think there's a soul that this hasn't touched, you know, personally or just watching it on on TV. It's devastating what's happening over there. So we thank you for more literature. And I agree that all of the the mainstream media is not necessarily all the information that's out there. And there's other avenues to digest other material regarding this, so thank you for that as well. Sorry, Chris, I didn't get your last name. McDonough, all right. So, yeah. You were asking about the cost benefit analysis of the the ambulance. Obviously, that 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 predates me a little bit, but how it's explained to me is that if we do the cost benefit analysis, might not necessarily say, hey, this is enough revenue or plenty of revenue to make a profit for the city. But what they're saying is that it still might be in the best interest of the city to lower the, you know, the the response times of our ambulance. And so it it might be an actual cost to the city, but the the benefit that the city will gain from it might be worth even more. So, yes. So we but I do agree, these items should be looked at diligently before we jump into it, since it's it's apparent that we can't really back out of it fully, even if we wanted to. But it's still, I I believe personally that this this is something that the city needs. We we have issues. Even working at the county, we we have a reputation now of of overstretching our our mutual aid. And it's not a good thing when ambulances are coming from Austin, you know, when we have a hospital right here and people are desperately in need right here. So we we have to figure that out as soon as possible. The salary increases, that question as well? I guess that that would be in a affirmative no. If it wasn't, if it was a part of the 2024 budget, then we went into this right now. So that's that's the answer, right? Am I am I forgetting anyone? I think that's just about everything. Abstaining, obviously, that's that's definitely a legal question. But my understanding is that if it's a conflict like Councilman Poteet said, you should abstain with an explanation. So and that's what I will do as well. And that's all my comments for tonight. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, so I think that everybody was addressed. There are two items. I just wanted to, I think, Miss French, I think your situation there goes across departments, right? So I think it's D P W, it's police, it's Department of Buildings, and it's also fire, right? So I think I will get together with our Public Safety Chair at Poteet and we'll get on that right away. Another thing I wanted to address, and then we're gonna move on to the tally sheet, Mr. McDonough. You know, we could always consider abstaining, you know, but I believe a lot of these conferences, like what Councilman Thompson was saying, a lot of them are training. Like when we go to N I COM, we're learning. There there there's a wealth of knowledge there that you go to different seminars, and I'm just using that as an example because there's a lot of things that we don't know. And when we sit in those seminars, it's it's a great education for all of us to bring back, and it's a wealth of knowledge. Not N I COM for City Council is a wealth of knowledge 12 12 months out of the year, which is different from what Mr. Poteet went on. But there were a lot of things at that conference that was brought back to Mount Vernon, and he'll be making a report on that at the next meeting. Also, in regards to the ambulance service. So over the course of the last two weeks, I started to read up more on Control 60 at Westchester County. And I tend to take a bigger role in collecting information from Control 60. Control 60 basically runs the E M S throughout the county. And there's usually a representative from each community on their board. So I'm going to go to their public meetings and and kind of navigate when it pertains to the E M S and the ambulance service here in the city of Mount Vernon. With that being said, abstentions, you know, again, if it's training, you know, I don't I don't see why we we would abstain from it. But with that being said, let's move on to our next part of the meeting, which is the referrals. So can everybody take out their tally sheets? Oh, sorry, one minute. Okay, so Derek and I have to switch places because I am the acting mayor and our Pro Tem is out sick tonight. So I will ask our acting Pro Tem to come up. Thank you, everybody.
All right, good evening. So we're going to go right into our tally sheet. Legislation in public works, who's going to cover it? The coach here can cover for Brown.
Okay, I'll do legislation and public works.
Okay, I'll do.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry. First one, in ordinance acknowledging and celebrating Arbor Day and Earth Day, 2024, the city of Mount Vernon. That's a.
On the agenda.
That was on the agenda, okay. All right, next one, city clerk in ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a printer to be donated by Mr. Paul Crossoff for the department, for the Fire Department. That's on the agenda.
Thank you so much. I don't see any add-ons. There's nothing for Human Resources, Public Safety and Codes.
Thank you, Acting Council President Thompson. Item number three will be held from the Department of Buildings and ordinance setting the fees for the New York State Unified Solar Permit. Item number four will also be held. Item number five will be on the agenda. A resolution for the authorization for speed camera legislation. And that's all that I have.
You have two more on here. The newer February 26, you got it? One is from buildings, one is from mayor's office.
So you know what? That I read this out of out of order, so I'm sorry. Let me. All right. From Buildings, this item will be held and amendment to the salary to the first deputy commissioner. I remember not quite sure of the number.
This next item.
Department of Buildings, that will be held. I remember the next item will be called for from Buildings Resolution in Local Law. No, I'm sorry, I I apologize. This this is called for. Resolution in local law of the city of Mount Vernon reapproving solar energy legislation. And then the following two items will be on the agenda. Department of Buildings and ordinance setting. No, take that back. That that would also be held.
Yeah.
Department of Buildings and ordinance setting the fees for the New York State Unified Solar Permit.
No, that's held.
That's held.
Yes, okay.
And the last item will be on the agenda from the mayor's office, a a resolution for the authorization of speed camera legislation. And that's all that I have.
Thank you so much. And lastly, finance and planning.
An ordinance authorizing the attendance of Deputy Controller and one staff member at the 2024 New York Government Finance Officers Association Conference in Albany from April 17 to 192024. That's on the agenda. Lastly, in ordinance authorizing amendment of the 2024 salaries and transfers of funds from the contingent fund, count code A1990493 to various salary lines to cover adjustments. And that's on the agenda, and those are all the items I have.
Thank you. We'll write into our agenda. Can we have a roll call, please?
Okay, roll call, Councilman Boxel.
Oh, President.
Councilwoman Brown is absent. Councilman Poteet?
Here.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Here.
Acting President Thompson?
Here.
You, you have a call.
Thank you so much. Legislation in public works.
In ordinance acknowledging and celebrating Arbor Day and Earth Day, 2024, in the city of Mount Vernon. So move.
Second?
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Aye.
Councilman Poteet?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Acting President Thompson?
Aye.
All right, number two, an ordinance authorizing acceptance of a printer to be donated by Mr. Paul Crossoff of the Fire Department. So move.
Second?
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Aye.
Councilman Poteet?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Acting President Thompson?
Aye. Thank you. We, once again, we don't have anything under Human Resources this week. We're gonna go to Public Safety and Codes.
Thank you. I have one item, a resolution for the authors, the authorization of speed camera legislation. So move.
Second?
The other two items are held.
Yes, I got you.
You have to read it and say held on the floor.
Yes, read three and four and just say held. Thanks, thank you.
Item number three will be held, Department of Buildings and ordinance setting the fees for the New York State Unified Solar Permit. And then item number four will also be held, and I'll re-read item number five. A resolution for the authorization of speed camera legislation, so so move.
Second?
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Aye.
Councilman Poteet?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Acting President Thompson?
Aye. Finance and planning?
Number six, an ordinance authorizing the attendance of the Deputy Controller and one staff member at the 2024 New York Government Finance Officers Association Conference in Albany, April 17 to 192024. So move.
Second?
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Aye.
Councilman Poteet?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Acting President Thompson?
Aye.
All right, the last one. Number seven, the last one, an ordinance authorizing an amendment of the 2024 salaries and transfer of funds from the contingent fund, count code A1990.493 to various salary lines to cover the adjustments. So move.
Second?
On the question? Hearing none, roll call.
Councilman Boxel?
Aye.
Councilman Poteet?
Abstaining.
Reason for abstention?
I I believe that elected officials should vote for salary. So that's the reason for abstention.
Councilwoman Gleason?
Aye.
Acting President Thompson?
Aye.
Okay, so we have three ayes and one abstention.
Needs a second vote.
The legislation does not pass. We will have to have another vote, a second vote.
Thank you so much. That completes our agenda. Do we have anything else to come before the body of this council? Councilpersons, Poteet?
The last piece of legislation did not pass, or does or does need a second vote?
It is not passed yet. It just needs a second vote. So once it goes through a second vote, if it gets three votes again, three or four is gonna pass, okay? Any other questions or comments, Gleason?
I just, I know it's 10 minutes to eight, but I just wanted everybody to know that our Mount Vernon Knights Uh, I just, I know it's ten minutes to eight, but I just wanted everybody to know that our Mount Vernon Knights at eight fifteen are going to be uh playing in a basketball game at the county center. So anybody who can go and support them, I believe eight dollars is the admission, ten dollars for parking. So if you have nothing to do tonight and you wanna go cheer our young men on, that would be really great. And I also wanna wish uh my brother, who's a former Mount Vernon police officer, retired, a happy birthday tonight.
Happy birthday, brother. Anything else? I know that uh this, is it Thursday? I believe it's Thursday at the Dole Center. Is the, the close of the um Black History Month celebration, so that's tomorrow, yes. So it starts, I forget the time, I'm sorry, I forgot the time. I was trying to see if I had it in my um phone. One moment, cause I wanna make sure that everyone gets it. Here it is. Okay, it's gonna be at the Dole Center and it starts at six thirty PM to eight PM. So that's the Black History Closing Concert. Supposed to be a lot of performers there. It's gonna be a wonderful event. Uh, stop by and check that out. Also, there is something happening.
Yeah, and uh Grace Baptist, okay, um. So Mayor Sean Patterson Howard uh with Cities United is hosting a youth public safety forum. The topic of discussion is to join us. We discuss critical issues of public safety in Mount Vernon. Come with your ideas of how you can be involved and solutions for improving the safety of our community and how you would like to be involved as we build our comprehensive public safety plan. The, this is for age groups, I believe it was ten to, hold on, let me see. If I could look in the body, it's from four PM to eight PM at Grace Baptist Church, fifty-two South Second Avenue, and I believe the age group, oh yeah, ten to twenty-four years, years old. And the three topic questions are living in Mount Vernon, what it means to you, what other communities strengthen Mount Vernon, and what are some areas that need improvement in Mount Vernon? So.
Thank you, and that's from four PM to eight PM.
Four PM to eight at Grace.
Absolutely. So please um participate in that. We need everyone participating. Also, this Friday, March first, over at uh Benjamin Turner, Benjamin Turner Academy, which is located six twenty-four South Third Avenue. Uh, the school district is gonna be meeting over there because the state is trying to cut funding um to all the schools um within the state. So we wanna make sure that we go over there in solidarity and make sure that our, our funding does not get cut. Cause what happens if the state cuts funding, more taxes fall on the back of homeowners, and we don't want that to happen, right? So make sure we show up in solidarity for that. That's this Friday, March first at ten thirty AM. So if you are not at work at ten thirty, please make your way over to Benjamin Turner Academy. Or if you can take a break at that time, just sow some support because we make a difference when we show up in numbers. So uh, that's all I have. Also, uh, keep the Swain family in your prayers. They lost two family members. Uh, so just keep the Swain family in your prayers. Um, it's a difficult time. Any kind of losses is difficult, but let's continue to watch out for each other and um hold each other up. Do we have anything else? That's it?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call on adjournment.
Councilman Boxel?
Aye.
Councilman Potteet?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gleyson?
Aye.
Acting President Thompson.
Aye. Thank you. The time is seven fifty-three PM and this meeting is adjourned.